Okay, it is November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It is seven o'clock PM on the dot, and we are going to begin the Town of Sherburne Select Board Meeting. Can I have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
A second. Go on favor Jeff.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
And I am I as well. All right, I would like to ask the town administrator to please read the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First. First, we will amend or approve of the agenda and then a period of public comment. And Kim Chester from Sherburne picks up is here to for public comment. And then the first item on the agenda is consent agenda that includes payroll warrant draft minutes of October seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, and sets the next meeting dates of December second, December sixteenth, and December thirtieth, if needed. Item two is welcome new police chief Thomas Galvin. Item three is joint meeting with the Sherburne School Committee consideration of appointment. This appointment is for a one-year term to expire at the May two thousand and twenty-two town election. And the candidates listed are Sanjita Russo, Craig Burrow, Michael Winters, and Kathy Horrigan. Item four is consideration to grant the temporary license to Verizon for underground cabling at Woodhaven Elder Housing. Sean Colleen, Buildings Manager. Then item five is consideration of appointment to the Energy and Sustainability Committee. Brad Corralius for a term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Item six is Sherburne Master Plan and Open Space and Recreation of Plan update with Marion Neutra. Neutra. And the last item is consideration of routine business Select Board Town Administrators. And it's adjourned to executive session. Item one, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board in the town. And the chair does so declare to discuss the town library pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty, A Section twenty-one, A three, and seven, and Suffolk Construction BD Cam four, four, nine Massachusetts, four, 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 year two thousand and seven. Item two, meeting with Town Council and Executive Session pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty, A Section twenty-one, A three, six, and seven, and Suffolk Construction BD Cam four, four, nine Massachusetts, four, 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 year two thousand and seven, to discuss thirty-one Hunting Lane, forty-one North Main Street, Igor Lebarsky, et al., the Town of Sherburne, number twenty-one, MISC, PS zero, 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 one, nine, three, HPS, and thirty-one Hunting Lane LLC, the Sherburne Board of Appeals, Housing Appeals Committee number twenty twenty-one dash zero five, and forty-one North Main Street LLC, the Sherburne Board of Appeals, Housing Appeals Committee number twenty twenty-one dash zero six. Item three is strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations with non-bargaining employee pursuant to GL, MGL Chapter thirty, A Section twenty-one, A two, and seven, and Suffolk Construction BD Cam four, four, nine Massachusetts, four, 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 year two thousand and seven, DPW Director.
All right, thank you very much, dude. Do I have any motions relative to agenda? Yeah, go Paul.
I'd like to just.
I'm sorry, Paul, you froze. Is he frozen for anyone else?
Open the the meeting with a moment of. Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
I'd like to propose that we start the meeting with a moment of silence for Pat Cassell for her passing and to celebrate her life.
Okay, I could agree with that. Is anyone object to that? Okay. Very good. I probably appreciate that as well, Paul. Let's open that up.
Well, if I could say a word on this. We just learned that Pat Cassell passed. And she has been a tremendous volunteer for the town. She used to be the cameraman for the cable TV and would attend numerous meetings for years. She was been very active in Farm Pond and on the Farm Pond Committee, which was her passion. She's very much active in the community. I'd like to have a moment of silence to honor her and to celebrate her life. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Just to add to that, Paul, Pat was the one that spearheaded the and raised the money to build the handicap accessible ramp at Farm Pond, and it's just a beautiful addition that she did to the pond. It's just it it improved it for everyone, not just for handicap accessibility, but she was really, she really did a lot for the town.
Absolutely. That's a very quite well. She's been long, long as I can remember. Okay. If there's no more further comment on that, I believe on Kim Chester has a public comment as well. I can go feel free to go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Kim Chester, and I reside at Sixth Perry Street in Sherburne. I'm here to very briefly share some good news about what the town and its residents have accomplished through the Sherburne Picks Up Movement. I, along with Catherine Rockio and Eddie Mae Weiss, founded Sherburne Picks Up in two thousand and twenty with a goal to raise awareness and inspire action around the problem of litter. With the support of the town administration, the Select Board, the Police Department, and most importantly, Sean Colleen and the team at the DPW, we completed two very successful townwide pickups. The first was on Thanksgiving weekend of two thousand and twenty, where we picked up over one hundred bags of litter in a single weekend. The second was a month-long cleanup in April of two thousand and twenty-one, which included an art installation of the internationally recognized litter letter project. We created five-foot wire cages spelling the word Y, which were placed on the split at sixteen and twenty-seven, built by local resident Brian Phillips and installed by the DPW team and filled with litter by our litter with that by our residents. We collected more litter than the letters could hold. Sherburne is recognized as the first town in Massachusetts and the first state in the Northeast to complete a litter letter project. I hope that people will get a chance to check out our pictures on the global website. And some more good news, we just received a certificate from Keep Massachusetts Beautiful, which reads, "We hereby congratulate Keep Sherburne Beautiful for earning the distinction of being a two thousand and twenty-one Keep Massachusetts Beautiful chapter in good standing. Thank you for your efforts to make your community a clean, green, litter-free place to live, work, and play. Together, our network of local chapters is keeping Massachusetts beautiful." And now a little bad news. Litter is still being gifted to us every day. So Sherburne Picks Up cordially invites you to dawn your bright colors, grab a trash bag, and join us during Thanksgiving weekend to pick up litter when and wherever you choose. Please sign up so that we can see how well we're doing on the Facebook page for Sherburne Picks Up, on the town website, or on Nextdoor. Supplies will be available from the DPW, and the details are available online, and also if you see the local newspaper this week. Thank you to everyone who makes Sherburne Picks Up work in Sherburne, and thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you very much. It was noticeable. I tell you, driving on the community, it was a very successful litter pickup. I definitely appreciate that part of the community.
It was really inspiring, and thanks to all of you for all of your support.
Absolutely. Okay, without any further public comment, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have any motions or comments to alter the consent agenda?
We'll have approval.
Okay, is I have a second?
Second.
All right, one second. All in favor Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
George? Or I red leapt.
Hi.
I might as well. Very good. Our next up is a welcoming to the new police chief. We had some snafus at our last meeting, so unfortunately couldn't have it then. But I believe it's it's week three, is it? Is it Tom? Is it chief?
It is, yes, the middle of week three.
Week three, as I joked last week, the honeymoon's over.
I did. I joked myself a couple of times that, you know, there were two big events already. I came back Tuesday for day two and the second Monday for week two. So I it's really been, although it's only been a short time, it's been great. You know, fortunately, last week was Veterans Day, allowed me the opportunity to go to the Veterans Luncheon and and meet some members of the community. You know, it's really, I think, important to do that, and there's a lot more of that that I that I hope to do in the near future. But just just briefly, if I may, I just wanted to thank the board and thank the board for the, you know, the opportunity to lead the Police Department and serve the residents. You know, just in the short time I've been here, you know, I've gotten to to have some discussions with all the officers that that serve the town and, you know, I think you should be, you should know, and you're very fortunate that they're a good group of of police officers here that really care and care about the community. And I look forward to to moving things forward with them, especially as we work through police reform, which is something is a kind of a hot button in policing in the Commonwealth today. And there's some things that that are probably going to have to change, some things that we may need to upgrade to to meet the standards that are being set through that police reform. But I think our officers are ready, and they're ready to embrace that as we move forward. You know, I have definitely had some challenges ahead. You know, fortunate to to jump right in right as budget time approaches. So I'm doing my best to to work with Lieutenant Bento and pick his brain and really try and learn the internal procedures and how we've gotten to be where we are today. So I have a lot of work ahead. I'm sure I'm going to have some great discussions with advisory as we move forward. You know, as we try and to implement some of those changes that that we need to do immediately. But I I think really there's going to be taking a step back and and looking at the history and looking historically at what we've done and then trying to make a adjustment, sorry, in the future. You know, and and not rush into too many things right away.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Does people know the chief came from a from a chief of Berlin, Mass? Do you want to say a little bit about your background, chief?
Sure. So I, correct, I did. I was the chief in Berlin. I I grew up not too far away in the town of Wayland, actually right in a house right on Route twenty-seven. So I am very familiar and understand everyone's traffic woes that we see. You know, the Metro West is very difficult in that respect. So I form of years were all in Waylands, graduated from their schools, and actually I started in policing with the Wayland Police Department as with my father as my first police chief. I spent nearly sixteen years in the town of Waylands, and then the opportunity to to serve the residents of Berlin as their police chief came to fruition. You know, I was very fortunate to spend eight-plus years in Berlin, and then the opportunity to come back to Middlesex County and back to the Metro West and really to kind of my, what I feel like is is my home area in Sherburne. So I'm very excited. You know, I hope through my experiences, you know, we can meld my experiences with the the history of the department here and and move things forward. Just a little like, as I said, my father was my first police chief, so I worked for him for three years before he retired. My brother is also recently retired. He was a lieutenant with the North Borough Police Department. I have a cousin who currently serves the city of Boston as a police officer, and my uncle is retired from as the police chief of the town of Norwell. So we kind of come from a policing family. And that really truly is a benefit to me because I have I have some sounding boards and some stress relief and people I can reach out to that have been through it all in the past.
That's great.
And then in my personal life, I'm married. I have I have two kids. Two, two, like I call them little girls, but one's a freshman in high school now, and the other's in eighth grade, so they keep me extremely busy. They are, they're both pretty incredible little athletes. You know, I don't know where that comes from. They're they're great students and great athletes, so we're very blessed to to be able to watch them and watch them continue to grow.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for the overview. Does it? I'll take, is anyone from the board have any questions before I go to the public?
Just a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul. Yeah, please.
Sure. Thanks. First, I wanted to welcome Chief Galvin. And secondly, I wanted also to mention and give thanks to David Bento, who covered the position as interim for seems like a long time now, but did a good job and is staying on and helping with the transition with Chief Galvin. So thanks to Dave Bento. And thanks to the department for welcoming the new chief and coalescing is a reinvigorated department.
Very good. Any other comments on the board? How about the general public? Are there any questions from the general public? You can raise your virtual hand, or I can't see everyone on my screen, so the virtual hand's always preferable. And I'm sure the chief would also be amicable to any one-on-one questions that people have as well, not to put them on the spot.
I don't see any virtual or physical hands.
I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions in the future, so I'll be prepared. Anytime anyone has anything, you know, feel free to reach out. You know, I'm sure there'll be lots of conversations I have with the community as as we move forward.
Very good. Thank you very much, chief. Thank you. Seeing you around. All right. Well, any further ado, we're going to move on to agenda item number three. And I'll apologize now in case I again, if I pronounce anyone's name wrong. Joint meeting with the Sherburne School Committee in consideration appointment for a one-year term to expire May twenty twenty-two at the next town election. Um, Sankeeta Russo, Craig Aburley, Michael Winters, and Kathy Horrigan. Now, before we proceed, I want to make sure we have the members of the school committee here is Nancy Cordell, the chair.
Nancy Cordell is here by phone. I am currently also interviewing the for the new superintendent, so stepped out for this call. Thank you very much.
Okay, very much. Now, Nancy, do you want to call your meeting to order? Do you have Amanda Dennis and David here?
I do. I can't see. I know I have Amanda. So this is I call, I'll call this meeting to order for the Sherburne School Committee at seven seventeen. Amanda is there. David and Dennis, are you also present?
Yep, David is here.
Okay, great.
Okay, very good. So just people know, this is a a collective vote between the Select Board and the Sherburne School Committee to fill backfill a position that was recently recently vacated on the Sherburne School Committee. Now, there was a a meeting previous to this where actually a member of the Select Board joined the school committee in interviews with the again, with the school committee of the other four applicants. George, do you want to say anything to that or?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Thanks to the school committee for having me join your meeting. I know Marion sat in listening as well. So I was impressed with, I'm very impressed. First, I just want to start, I'm very impressed that we had four volunteers for one position, which is kind of crazy in this in our town. Like, a lot of times, it's it's great to see so much interest in serving the public. And we have some strong candidates, and and, you know, I think this we can get into more of that as we as we discuss, but, you know, the school committee was actually so impressed with, just to report from the meeting on Monday night, they were so impressed with candidates, they didn't vote to recommend one candidate. I think they really kind of had narrowed it down to two of the candidates that they that they really felt were head and shoulders a little bit above the the others and 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 hopefully, I think if the candidates are here tonight, there was an opportunity, Eric, maybe for them to just say a word. And then we can kind of discuss with each of the school committee members as well, where where they come from, and maybe have Nancy kind of give a summary from the school committee side as well.
Okay. If no objects, I'll go in. What I figured I would do is I'll give each candidate basically three minutes to make us, they are up to three minutes, to make a statement just about themselves, you know, what they like about position, pretty much say whatever you want to say within those three minutes. And then I can also put it to the school committee, and then we can go around and ask questions of candidates as we see appropriate. If that sounds okay with everyone. Okay, let's go in the order that we have here. Sankeeta Russo, are you here?
I am.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll start my stopwatch. You got three minutes to talk about yourself and why this interested me.
Sure. So my full name is Sankeeta, but everyone calls me Keeta. I just wanted to make that known. So I, my husband and I moved here about six and a half years ago when we were expecting our second child. We moved from Natick. I grew up in Wellesley. We have three sons, two of which are at Pine Hill now. Our oldest is in third grade. Our middle is in first grade, and our youngest is almost three years old. I am interested in the position because I really would like, education's very important to me, and my children are very important to me, and I'd I'd like to be involved in the town and within the school committee because I feel like I'm very passionate about my children's future and and what they are doing in in school and within the community. I, you know, I saw that I saw that the position was vacant, and I wanted to volunteer my time. I do have the time to dedicate to something like this. I have quite a lot of experience sitting with different committees and and boards in the past. And I, but I think that the biggest thing is that I I really just want to be involved within the community and within the school. I currently am working, I work with the CSA at Pine Hill. I'm also on the school advisory board there. And, you know, I think that it's important, so I'm a hundred percent Indian. My children, my husband is not. I think that it's important, you know, I think that as I'm hearing things at the school committee, I'm hearing more about equity, inclusion, and making sure that all the voices are being heard, and that's, I think, probably what's kind of sparked my interest of, oh, you know, I really want to know what's going on. I want to know what what else is being brought up within the community and within the school systems. It's just an important piece of the puzzle that I I'd like to know more about and be more involved in. I don't know if that was three minutes or if that, if I left a lot of time here, but I guess I was trying to be as succinct as possible.
It was right about two minutes. Very good. Thank you very, thank you very much. Well, for the do, I'll go on to Craig Aburley, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
No, it's okay. It's a, it's happened all my life. My name's Craig Aburley. I live here in Sherburne at twenty-seven Deerfield. You know, I was initially drawn to this position really because of the role that education played in my life. I would say that, you know, on the whole, it changed the trajectory of my life. It's also one of the primary reasons, as Gita said, you know, why we moved to Sherburne five years ago was because of the school system. I found ways to get involved in the community and, you know, coaching in the DS Soccer Club. I've also helped to support my wife, who has co-directed the Pine Hill Five K for the last couple of years and really see this committee as a way of getting involved in, I guess, even a more official capacity to contribute to the continued success of Pine Hill and the district at large. Professionally, I would just give you a little background there. I've been at my company for about sixteen years. I work for Liberty Mutual. I've had the opportunity to hold several leadership positions there, and I think that that's really provided me a good opportunity to consume a lot of information, assess the facts, and and really arrive at fair and balanced decisions. I think it's also required me to have strong communication skills, work cross-functionally, collaboratively with, you know, a number of different teams that I, you know, may not hold direct, you know, authority over, but, you know, need to influence and 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 think that that could be of value to the committee. Also with my insurance background, think that there could be some skills brought to, you know, to the committee from the perspective of risk management, risk assessment. You know, that that could be a positive add to the perspectives there. My main areas, I guess, of interest and kind of what I hope to see for the school is just continuing to maintain the standard of excellence, ensuring that our students are developing broad perspectives, certainly to include the diversity, equity, and inclusion elements that Gita spoke to. Make sure they're always fostering that good sense of community integrity, pride, acceptance, well-being, including mental well-being and and mental health. And just really, I think, reinforcing that, you know, success has many different definitions and and making sure that, you know, all involved with the school, including our students, have that awareness and understanding.
Very good. Thank you very much. So we said, all right, next up is Michael Winters, please.
Don't know if he's here.
I was looking. I didn't see him when I went through before. I don't see him on here.
Well, if he comes back after we do the next one, then I'll give him an opportunity. So if not here now, how about Kathy Horrigan?
I didn't see her name, although there's a few people here with phone numbers, so I can't tell.
Kathy, if you want phone numbers, feel free to speak up.
That's here.
Okay, like I said, if if within this agenda item, someone does actually log on, they're welcome to speak. So at least of these two candidates that just spoke, Santiano, where so, does anyone from the Select Board or actually the school committee, which maybe I'll actually hand that off, anyways, at least the Select Board right now, because I can recognize you on my Zoom screen, have any questions?
Marion does.
Oh, yeah, Mary, please go ahead.
I have a couple of questions for both candidates, just looking for a short answer. One is it's struck me all the time that I've worked on boards and committees in town that even though the school consumes most of our budget, and even though decisions made at our board meetings impact the schools in terms of population and and the needs of the community, there's relatively, in my view, not enough communication between the school committees and and the town committees. That is, most people who know all the board members don't know who's on this school committee, and I think that's a shame. So I'd like to ask both of you, if you can think of ways that you might or the school committee might improve that, those lines of communication and keep them open.
Good question. I guess we'll, we'll take them the same order. So if Sankey could answer that first.
I think I think that communication across the different committees is absolutely essential. I think that in order to understand what is being discussed and what is being decided, it's important to understand all the different points of view. So I think that that's a very valid concern and very, very important one. So I I think there there could be cross meetings. I think that there we could have possibly someone from each of the committees attend different meetings so that they can understand and report back to their own respective committee. I think that there can be some joint events where people can bring bring together the key items that are being discussed maybe on a quarterly basis. But I think I having a liaison that can attend different meetings may be one way to bridge the gap and to have more communication. I'm not sure exactly how it would work, but maybe maybe some key items could be shared after meetings so that the each committee can understand what is going on and what was discussed during those meetings as well. Not just communication by speaking, but but having agenda items shared amongst committees. And I think it's essential for anything to get done is to have that communication. So I do think it's an important piece.
Very good. How about, how about you, Craig?
Yeah, I, you know, I think Gita did a great job of throwing out, you know, several several good ideas, and and certainly, you know, I'm not currently you know, aware of what some of those mechanisms are that are in place between the committees. I certainly, the first thing that came to my mind was was having a liaison similar to how George attended the school committee meeting, you know, earlier this week to be a represent, to have representation from the Select Board in that conversation. I think that, you know, makes a whole lot of sense to to have an individual that is you know, has a mandate to stay up to speed on what's going on in the Select Board and and vice versa. You know, so that that, you know, connectivity can be maintained. Certainly, you know, things like, you know, meeting notes and other, you know, mechanisms such as that can be helpful in, you know, documenting what was discussed, or certainly like we are with the meeting this evening, you know, even recording them so others, you know, can can go as in-depth as they like. You know, in a given committee's meeting, but but certainly, you know, think many of the things Gita said, and and maybe a couple of those others that I just mentioned.
Okay, very good. I'm gonna see anyone else on the select board. Actually, Marian, do you have another question? Is there a hand left?
Well, I do, but I don't want to hog, hog the town. So you can ask, let me speak or not, up to you.
Well, first, does anyone else have a question or hand off to Marian? Okay, go ahead, Marian.
Well, it's kind of another communication question, actually. You know, our Board of Health has, is monitoring the COVID-19 situation very closely and have made the determination that to, to continue, at least for now, continue the mask retirement requirement, sorry, in, in Pioneer School. And I just want to know how, how you as potential school committee candidates feel about that. Do you support that decision?
Go ahead, Sankita.
I, I do support the decision. I think that until we can get to a point where the numbers are slowed, slowed down and we can keep our children safe, I think that it's the right thing to do. I think that, you know, we, we may not like it, but I think it's, it's proven to be helpful. And, you know, hopefully the vaccination rates will, will continue to rise and we can get the kids vaccinated. And until then, I think it's important to keep people safe. You know, I, I have a two-year-old at home and, and he can't get vaccinated. And, you know, it's, it's very important to me that we keep our children safe. I also have aging parents that have, you know, have not been healthy and, and I worry about them. So I think we have to do whatever we have to do to keep our children and our community safe.
Hey, go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, you know, I, when I, you know, come to understand the folks that are on our Board of Health, I think we're, you're obviously very fortunate. You know, have several doctors that live in our community and, and obviously the, the Boston medical community is, is one that's, you know, very well-renowned. So certainly I, I would always kind of defer to their medical expertise and knowledge on, on what the data and what the science tells us. You know, and I also recall, I forget if it was on a select board meeting or a school committee meeting, but I think it was a, a public comment at one point where one of our community members kind of said, if we take a step back and we say our primary goal is to keep our children in school and keep them there in that in-person learning environment, and we start from there, you know, I'm, I'm willing to obviously do whatever it takes to, to keep that, you know, that experience going for them. Because I think it's a much more fruitful experience than, you know, what we had to go through when we were in a more remote arrangement. So I'm fully supportive of the, the mask mandate until, you know, until we hear otherwise from our medical experts and, and, and would, would trust their guidance on that.
Yeah, very good. Anyone else on the select board, any questions? How about the school committee?
Paul raised his hand.
I looked for the virtual hand, sorry. Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
My, my question is kind of the, the inverse of, of this process, which is, what skills do we have on the current school committee? So I can figure out if there are gaps that need to be filled. And if there are gaps need to be filled, which of these candidates best fills the gap that would be on the school committee? So my question really is, what, what is the background of the current members of the school committee? And what, what gaps might there be that, that these candidates would fill?
We don't have their resumes in front of us. I don't know how, maybe if individuals of the school committee want to speak up. Otherwise, it's kind of, um, I can't answer that, but I don't have the resumes in front of us. If George, you want to put any input, just suggest maybe we go to the school committee members?
Yeah, I would actually maybe have Nancy speak to that, just as the bear of the school committee. As we're not familiar, you know, they did the interviews and they know the other members of their committee. So maybe, maybe defer that to Nancy, because the candidates obviously wouldn't know what the resumes are of the existing school committee.
Thanks, George.
Yeah, a very brief, okay, hi, can you hear me? Very briefly, Amanda, Amanda Brown is an educator. David works for, both, both David, myself and Dennis, excuse me. I'm from the corporate world. David does have experience or he currently works and has worked with governments and municipalities. So in the week, so in David, myself and Dennis do not have any background education besides attending school. I, my background is sales and marketing.
Okay, very good.
I mean, we could go into, I mean, I think that, you know, some of this has interview and negotiation and budget. I mean, I don't know how deep and I don't know if it's the time to do that now, but, you know, or I can have them go individually if I, if that's not a cohesive enough summary.
I think that's, that broad base product, that's all I got, Paul.
This is, I, I, going through the, the applicants, I saw that one is a lawyer. Is there a lawyer on the committee already?
We currently do not have a lawyer on the committee.
And I saw one, I think, is, is an accountant. Do, do you have an accountant on the committee?
This is Dennis.
Dennis.
Can you hear me? This is Dennis.
We can hear you, Dennis.
Yes, I'm, I'm a CPA. I, I'm a partner at Press for Ross Cooper's. And I've been on the committee for less than a year at this point, as of the last meeting.
Okay, very good. Okay, does that satisfy Paul? Is that, yeah, question? Okay, very good.
Can I suggest that maybe have Nancy give kind of a rundown of the interviews from the other night and, and kind of?
I was gonna initially ask Nancy, Nancy, do you want to collect any questions from your board? And then I was gonna go over maybe how your interviews went. Does, does, does a, do you want to collect any questions as a school committee? How many additional questions for you after interviews this week?
Does anyone, anyone have any more questions, Dennis, David, or Amanda?
David, I don't, I don't have any additional questions.
And as George suggests, oh, sorry, anyone else have any questions?
This is Dennis, neither do I.
Okay, so as George suggested, do you want to discuss at all your thoughts and impressions speaking for the school committee based on your interviews earlier this week?
So I think, I think it's most important to probably talk about the two candidates that I think my fellow committee members that, that are in, and Sankita and Craig are both here tonight that kind of rose to the top of the four interviews. Although again, we're thankful and, you know, I think anyone, you know, any one of the four could serve, you know, this Sherburne School Committee, you know, faithfully until, you know, May 2022. But I think the two that rose to the top were on the call tonight and we heard them speak. So the interviews went well. And, and so I'm not, so as, at this point, I'm not sure what, what else I can offer besides that. Where, where do we, where do we go from there as far as the vote or?
Well, it does seem to me, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, just to add to that, because I was on the interviews the other night. I, I agree with Nancy that I felt Sankita and Craig kind of rose above and, and really could step right in to the school committee. I was impressed because I asked every one of the candidates about their budgeting experience. Always impressed with a BAPs and MBA from Sankita. And I know Craig has, Craig has a lot of experience with corporate budgeting as well. So I think that's, that's an important piece of the school committee. And, and, and I just think they both gave very good answers. One thing I would just kind of add to this is, she mentioned it again tonight, and I think she gave a very good answer on Monday night. Sankita really brings diversity and a good perspective on diversity to, to the board. And I think she answered that question very well. And I know one of the focuses of the school committee is equity, diversity, and inclusion. So I, I just want to say I would almost recommend Sankita because of that.
In, in terms of process, Eric, do we have four school board members here and five select persons? Is that correct?
Believe you do. So in the past, like we did this recently among the planning board, we actually gathered the, the actual boards' votes first and the select board voted after that. I don't know if anyone here has any discussion on that process, if there's any preference from either board or the school committee?
Just to be clear, it is a vote of nine, not a vote of five and four.
Right, that's what I was wondering. And Paul, you're really more rules of order here. But I mean, what if we, I, I think we're very fortunate. They both are outstanding candidates. What if we just, as nine voted, just one by one went through and, and voted for one of the two?
That's the way it's usually done. That's the correct way.
Yeah, I think.
Not just nominate, not, not just nominate one, just everybody.
Everyone just cast a vote. Cast a vote. Is that, is that acceptable to the school committee?
That, that's acceptable to me. How about David, Dennis, and Amanda? Is that okay with you?
I'm with me.
Yep, fine with me as well.
Okay, but like I said, in the past, I've allowed the other board just to simply make a vote. I get it's one by one, but it's kind of a respect of the chair and respect of the, you know, autonomy of the different boards. I'd still like to proceed with that just because it's what we've done historically. So Nancy would lead a vote of the school committee and I would lead a vote of the select board. Does anyone have any, it's still a vote of nine. I think we got that. But I just want to be consistent. I think we did that with the, with the Board of Health and we did that with the planning board very recently. Board of Health was like a year ago. Any objections to that?
Nope.
Okay, okay, Nancy, if you don't mind, I'm gonna hand it off to you to collect the vote of the school board.
Okay, so when I collect the vote, it's a vote. I'm not making a motion, correct?
Yeah, just call.
Yeah, basically how it is, maybe call out each member's name and they say one of the candidate's names.
Okay, great.
And someone keeps scoring, Diana, keep score.
Okay, Amanda Brown.
And this is Amanda, and I'm gonna cast my vote for Sankita.
David.
This is David Kaisers. I'm also gonna cast my vote for Sankita.
Dennis.
This is Dennis Craig Aberly.
And Nancy Cordell votes for Sankita.
Okay, I'll go down the list here of the select board. Jeff?
Yeah, I'll go for Gita.
Marian?
Oh, yeah, I'll go. This is very difficult, I have to say, honestly. Either one would be excellent, but I too will vote for Sankita.
George?
I will also vote for Sankita.
Paul?
So I'm going to follow George's recommendation and vote for Sankita.
All right, and I'll vote for Sankita as well. I want to thank both candidates very, very much. And I, I always urge people to do continued volunteerism, backbone of the community. And it is both difficult, is both optimistic and difficult when you have two great candidates. Absolutely. All right, I guess the school committee, if, if you want to close your, close your, close your session.
Sure, can I have, can I, can we, am I just adjourning the meeting?
Just make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all right, sure. I'd like to make a motion or join the Sherburne School Committee meeting.
Amanda Brown, I'll second.
Any discussion? Nancy Cordell, Amanda Brown?
Yes.
Dennis?
Dennis Quandt, yes.
David?
David Kaisers, yes.
And Nancy Cordell, yes. And, and thank you for everyone's patience with me on the phone as I am gonna run back in to interview the, one of the candidates for superintendent. So I apologize, it's kind of disjointed with me on the phone. So thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you for your time, Nancy, and thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Before the select board closes, you had a question? Close this agenda item.
Yeah, we're probably gonna say the same thing, Jeff.
I think so.
I, I have a comment that Craig Aberly just sounds like a wonderful addition to any committee in town. So I, I'd really encourage him to look into other opportunities. I don't want to lose him as a really talented volunteer. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. And is, is there an easy way to find out what committees have vacancies or needs at this time?
Diane, Diane, you can send them a message with current vacancies. And also, one thing to consider, I can also get you in touch with Mary Wolf, who's the town, the, the town moderator, and she appoints people to the advisory committee, and I think you should talk to her.
I think, I think Marian did steal my thunder. I was gonna say the same thing. And Craig, you did a great job. So I really am happy that you applied also. But we do have a lot of openings. I think it's on the website, David, isn't it? I thought there was a list on the website also.
Should be on the website, but we'll, we'll get him an updated list.
Okay.
Okay, Craig, we'll see you again.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Okay. While only for the do, we'll go on to agenda item number four. Looks like there's two fours in tonight's agenda, but I'm just gonna die in a hard time. Okay, consideration of a grant of a temporary license to Verizon for underground cabling at the Woodhaven Elder Housing. Sean Colleen, Facilities Director.
Yeah, he's there. You're muted. There you go.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
All right, so as the select, as you gentlemen are aware, and lady, we cannot approve a permanent easement without a town meeting vote. But that is what's required usually to do underground utilities for the utility companies on either public or private property. The reason they do that is obvious. They have a significant cost in, in this infrastructure, especially at a place like Woodhaven. So we have asked Verizon to run files to all the buildings at Woodhaven. It was never run. There's only copper cable going to the buildings and Comcast cable service. So in that, they've asked for an easement, which will come up at next spring's town meeting. But until then, we can give them, we can grant them the temporary license. It's essentially the same language and it'll term out when the easement is approved and recorded. And you have both in your packet, not to confuse things, but the license is the only thing we're looking at tonight.
I had, I had one question about this. There it is. What's the extent of this? Okay, so it's mostly on the actual town property. It's not in the right of way? Or is it actually in the right of way? A village, Village Way is a public way, right?
It's a public way. It's not an accepted street.
Oh, it's not.
So it's all, it's, it's all town property. We just go from what was carved off for Village Way to
Okay.
Woodhaven. It, it's a little confusing in there because if you actually look at the, the maps, Leland partially sits on some of the same parcels.
Okay.
It's all town-owned property, though. So it's not like, it's not like we're running into where we have like a state road right of way.
Because I, I know if it's a public right of way, you can actually do a grant of location, which a select board can do without town meeting. That's all. Select board can actually just, you know, unilaterally, it's given the authorization, has the, whatever it's called, the keeper of the streets or whatever, the streets are pretend. It's to, to actually give rights within the right of way. But this is all within town property too. You're right, we gotta do a town meeting easement. I had one other question about it. And this, this gives, um, now, um, would Haven residents have a choice between Comcast and Verizon? Is that correct, once this is done?
That, yes, correct, they will. And this coincides, just real quick for anyone that doesn't know, it's Verizon's intent to abandon the copper lines within. It was originally slated for the first of, of this coming year. I think COVID's probably pushed that out. It's also a pretty tall order. There's a lot of copper line out there. But that backbone's going away, so that they would have eventually had to run fiber into there. That's about the only place in town where fiber is not installed. It's, it's not coming at a cost to us because part of our license that we, that we. It's, it's not coming at a cost to us because part of our license that we, that we signed with Verizon the first time, and Paul may be the only, probably the only member that was on and remembers that, but they, they were required to offer it to everyone in town. So we, we chose at the time to not have them put that infrastructure in. That was the late 90s, I think. And, you know, we solicited this year that they, that they would and, and that's what's happening. It's, it's in process. They've already done some of the work in the buildings.
And if this goes to the common, I know there's always an issue in Woodhaven, whereas the TV in the common room is charged as if it was like a TV in a bar and they actually made revenue off of it and they charge an outrageous amount of money. It'd be nice if this is a competitive nature, which could help them bring their price down.
Verizon actually is, they still honor the free drop and, and that TV was actually listed as one of the free drops. I have one here that we could have one at Town Hall. We don't, you obviously get basic cable for free, but it'll, yeah, it'll be a significant decrease in the cost if they, even if they choose to have some premium channels. I know they like to watch sports down there and some other stuff.
They do. They watch the NFL.
They're big NFL watchers, very big.
That's awesome. That's great, Sean. Thank you for all that. Thanks for the work on this. Absolutely. Are there any other questions from the select board?
Just, my question is, what's the timing? Is it a long project or just a few weeks, Sean?
You mean for the install?
Yeah.
It's actually been ongoing. No, it's taken, it's taken several months already. There's a lot of work that's already happened. Both in the background and again, they already ran lines in, in all three buildings. Essentially, to the point of the final install in, inside for each unit. But there's, you know, these conduits actually have to go all the way out to Route 16. There's a pole out on Route 16. If you're looking at that map, as you, as you turn into Village Way, they have to go all the way out there. So quite a bit of trenching. I, I think it's, I think you're right. It's a couple of weeks of, of this part of the install.
Yep.
And they, they have to check all these boxes before they can actually start taking orders. I mean, the residents are really eager to get their orders in because they're, they're not real happy with the service from Comcast.
Yeah. All right. Any more questions or motions relative to this?
Move approval.
All right. And second, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marian?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I'm also I. So do we have to come in individually and sign, and sign this?
As I said, I. I believe you do.
All right.
I, I guess you could probably vote to have all the signatures put on it. Might be better if it gets signed though, because it's gonna be recorded.
I'm fine either way. David, do you have a preference or does anyone have a preference here? Means you gotta show up at Town Hall by the next few days.
Yeah, can I authorize, can we amend the motion to authorize David Williams to something for all of us?
Yeah, I won't be available till next week, so that would be preferable to me also.
How about this? In case of the snafu, and we'll figure out who can sign it, maybe authorize both David and/or myself to sign it on behalf of the board.
That's fine.
Second.
All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marian? I think she said I.
Apologies, I, yes.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. I'm around so I can, we'll, we'll talk to council who can sign it. If it can be David I or House of Health. Okay, very good. Thank you again, Sean. One in favor? Number five, consideration of appointment to the Energy and Sustainability Committee. I mean, I was like getting in trouble with names again. Brad Correlyus for a term to expire June 15th, 2024. Is Brad here by any chance?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Oh, it's a telephone. Yes.
I don't see him and I've sent the agenda quite a few times, maybe. He is. Okay, great.
He's a phone number.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm the, I'm the 0599 phone number.
Okay. Um, I guess Brad, do you want to say something briefly? Looks like you're running unopposed. It's not gonna go smooth.
Yeah, yeah, sure. You know, I'll, I'll be brief since, you know, speaking of sports, we're up against the path schedule here. But yeah, so my family and I, we moved to Sherborne three and a half years ago from Framingham. I now have two, we're a family of four. I have two young daughters, both are in Pine Hill. I've actually been contributing as a volunteer to the E S C since the summer. And so I've, I actually recently presented a literature review on per capita carbon footprint in Sherborne to the committee, just so, you know, we can better understand where Sherborne lies within kind of the broader community when it comes to carbon emissions. But my professional background is actually epidemiology, public health. I've worked as an epidemiologist at the Harvard School of Public Health now for 10 years. And although that's, that's in infectious disease research, HIV, Zika, a little bit of COVID. But, you know, I'm very much interested in the E S C's mission just because of my public health background and recognizing that, you know, climate change, in my opinion, is the number one most important public health issue facing, you know, everyone, our planet. And shortly after moving into Sherborne, you know, realizing that we were on oil and that it was an aging system, I was able to not only convert our entire home heating systems, air source heat pumps, but then I, I installed a pretty large solar array and it's been working out swimmingly. And so, you know, I've, I've learned a lot from the process. I kind of obsessively researched both air source heat pumps and ground source heat pumps, also known as geothermal. So I figured, you know, I have a good amount of, you know, empirical experience with this stuff and I just wanted to serve as a resource for the community.
Well, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Brad?
Just a thank you for volunteering. That's wonderful.
First thing I want to hold up is who has more publishings, but I think I'll be fine. My family read his resume, it's 37 publishings in there. Um.
Yeah, very impressive.
Yes, absolutely. Epidemiology is actually a hard study.
Very lucky to happen.
Absolutely.
You know, we're, we're no longer mistaken for, for doctors that, that study skin, which, you know, that's been one of the few benefits of COVID.
Yeah, I had an intro epidemiologic class actually in 1991. It shows age and shows it's, it's been around for a while. Okay, sorry. All right. Any other questions? Any motions relative?
Move approval.
Yep.
Did, did someone, did you second Jeff?
Second, yep.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marian?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Thank you very much and welcome aboard, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
All right, thanks so much.
Absolutely. Okay, to the end here, agenda item number six, Sherburne Master Plan and Open Space Recreational Update. Marian Nutra, go ahead, Marian.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. This is meant to be a fairly quick update, actually the first of what I hope will be two installments in a master plan update. You'll recall that back in 2018, when we adopted the Open Space and Recreation Plan and then the Master Plan in 2019, we agreed that we would try to track progress toward implementation of the goals and recommendations, just to aid in updating it and keeping it on the radar screen. And this also is of course a select board goal, so I've continued to track this on the select board, keeping a record. And I've had to help with this from a lot of people, most recently from the Open Space Committee that took on as one of its missions, after complete, completing the Open Space and Recreation Plan back in 2018, the Open Space Committee agreed to, to stay viable and make as its mission to promote the goals that are shared between the Open Space and Recreation Plan and the Master Plan. So if, if I may, I'd like to share my screen.
Yeah, who controls that? Okay.
Okay, let's get that out of the way. Can you see the?
Yes.
My screen? Okay. Yeah, so just to remind you, the Master Plan had its goals kind of separated into, let's see, I'm gonna just shift down all the faces on the side so I have more room. Was divided into six kind of major sections. And what we want to talk about tonight is just natural resources and open space and recreational resources. These two are shared by both of the plans that are completely consistent with each other. So Tom Trainer and Kelly McClintock and I are going to present a very brief report with these slides. The slides will just show the highlights of the goals and highlight some things that have been done. But there's also a handout, as you saw, with a lot of details. So maybe since we're gonna try to be brief, let's hold the questions to the end. And we'll start by the first goal of natural resources and open space, which is water resource. And I will turn that over to Tom Trainer.
Thank you, Marian. And as a fellow member of the Open Space Committee, I'll be covering two slides here that summarize the main implementation goals and some areas of progress on the topic, a key topic in both plans, which was Sherborne's water resources. I'll be drawing on updates on these goals from the accomplishments of the seven or more boards or committees that you see listed at the top of the slide. Under this first major goal in yellow, a major step certainly, certainly was your board, the select board's reactivation of the former groundwater protection committee. And now I and seven other new groundwater protection committee members have met monthly for the past year and are focusing on several areas of water resource concerns. A high priority for the groundwater protection committee, along with our Board of Health, right now is developing a digital database of the G I S locations and additional important well data for all private and public wells in town. And on the next line, you see general chemical, that continues to be a issue of concern to groundwater committee, to the Board of Health, our water commissioners. We're all monitoring the results coming in on PFAS testing associated with migration of PFAS off that site in Framingham, near our northwest border. If I jump down to the next yellow major goal, the town regulatory boards have applied strict water protection standards in the evaluation of all new development projects in town. In addition, the last year's town meeting, the planning board got passed a revised subdivision bylaw, which will help to ensure the protection of more open space and hence provide greater protection of water resources. And lastly, under that bullet, the Farm Pond Advisory Committee, with the help of several volunteers, has continued a 20-plus year water quality monitoring program at the center of Farm Pond. And if I can go to the next line. At the top of this slide, under this major goal in yellow, our town planner has updated in the recent past, the Sherborne Stormwater Management Plan to meet EPA and state and town requirements. And Sherborne, through our Energy and Sustainability Committee, participated the past year on the 15-community Charles River Watership Flood Modeling Grant. Sherborne will continue as a participating community on the Phase Two project that just got underway last month. And under this last goal in yellow, articles on various water resources to help with public education have been posted on town websites and social media sites. The groundwater protection committee has distributed fact sheets in the past year on the free SDP residential PFAS well testing program, as well as on drought and water conservation issues. Finally, at the bottom of the slide there, you see listed some future priorities we'll be watching for. Of course, we see a major one, continuing education of residents. And I can also note that the Farm Pond Advisory Committee is working on an important Farm Pond Watership Protection Plan that will make the town eligible for some important state grants. And our DPW is, will be, has been and will continue to lead some town efforts to seek funding for compliance with some important EPA Charles River Watership phosphorus reduction mandates. So that's it on the water side. And I want to turn things now over to Kelly McClintock.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Marian. Thank you, select board here. I'm not going to go through each of these. The select board is very familiar with the Chapter 61 issues. You've been deeply immersed in it and know very well the regulatory changes. The future conservation actions, you're probably less familiar, but rather than explaining these two bullets in more depth, I'd like to dwell on what we haven't been able to do in the future priorities. The Conservation Commission has direct control over the management of a lot of property in town. And we feel we've been doing a reasonably good job keeping it attractive, open, but it's been fairly superficial. And going back a number of years in partnership with the State Department of Conservation Recreation and the inventories that you have been supportive of, we've learned a lot about our properties, about how to manage them better. And we had hoped, very, very much hoped, for this current budget season to have some comprehensive plans in place with budget projections. But the commission has been slammed this year with no agent and with the large developments it's had to deal with, hasn't been able to focus on this. But overriding priority for the next calendar year is to look at individual parcels, develop management plans, and as much as possible, next budget season, to bring to you some comprehensive funding proposals and management proposals. Thank you very much. And I'll turn it back to Marian. Right, thank you, Kelly. The last goal in the natural resources, open space section was about agriculture. And the major goal was really a single one, just support the long-term viability of Sherburne's businesses and farms. There was a farm accessory business bylaw adopted at town meeting that allows farm businesses to host events to support them during the off-season when they don't have crops. We do have the open space subdivision bylaw, which can be applied to towns as well as to open space to preserve 60% of a property as a working farm property. And then Sherburne Rural Land began allowing some farming activities on selected Sherburne Rural Land parcels. But there are still some future priorities shared by the, the Agricultural Commission and by others in town. First, the Ag Commission would like to get a right to farm bylaw passed soon to support their, the coexistence of farms within residential neighborhoods, which can be difficult and should be monitored and supported. There's a lot of support for community-wide events like open farm days, et cetera, et cetera, but that takes a lot of work. And one idea to cover that would be to create a volunteer community group like Friends of Sherburne Farms, for example, a nonprofit that could go ahead and raise funds and support all kinds of farming activities in town, not only support the commercial towns, town business and farm business, commercial farms, I should say, and farm businesses, but also all the micro-farming activities that happen all over town. They should be recognized and celebrated. So turning to recreational resources, there's been a lot of, a lot done in open space recreation by Sherburne Forest and Trail primarily, but also by DPW and CONCON.
by Sherborne Forest and Trail primarily, but also by DPW and CONCON. I think a really a major advance was finally an ADA trail in town. The Upper Charles Rail Trail, through the efforts of the town planner and DPW, was extended into Sherborne. And DPW created a parking lot on North Main Street for access to the Bay Circuit Trail. Sherborne Forest and Trail still is working on signage for that parking lot. Trails were rerouted, new bridges were built, roadside trails created. But I think a major, another major accomplishment of Forest and Trail was to put out a new version of the Trail Guide Sherborne Walks, which has been extremely popular, not only in Sherborne, but in neighboring towns. There've been over eight hundred copies sold. Future priorities are really on the cusp of being done. Trail signs throughout town is a current project of the Forest and Trail Association for safe road crossings, as well as finding trails and finding your way once you're in the open space. And then we really need to improve and expand regional trail connections. There's tremendous regional interest in, say, extending what can be extended, at least in the, say, the Aqueduct Trail, the Bay Circuit Trail that has connections to both Dover and Medfield and Ashland. But the connections are really terrible. They need to be completely improved. And then other regions, regional trails like the Upper Charles Rail Trail Extension is another opportunity for better connection to neighboring towns. And finally, organized recreation, the Recre- Commission has done an amazing job improving the management and keeping their programs funded. They cost very little to the town. They've responded to COVID nineteen by adding quite a few remote classes and exercise options. One of their major goals to begin with in the master plan was to improve the infrastructure at Laurel Farm. And they tried hard this year, proposed a plan for artificial turf fields. It wasn't adopted at town meeting, but it did highlight the problems that they face in using Laurel Farm for their programs. They've also redesigned the parking area over there, as you know. And CONCON and Forest and Trail have approved a new, not a new, but a reopened trail around the Ward's Park Recreation Pond that may already be done by now. I'm not quite sure. The future priorities for organized recreation are still to figure out a way and a, an agreed-upon plan to improve those playing fields at Laurel Farm. And another goal is to make the pathway, this is a small but important thing, make an ADA accessible pathway from that Ward's Pond Recreation Area to the Jamison Field, so that all residents can have easy access to the field. So basically, that, that closes our little presentation tonight. I just want to end by saying that this is, this is a lot of accomplishment that I think we should stop and recognize and celebrate. Certain town employees played big roles, like the town platter and DPW. But much of it, almost all of it, was done by volunteers. So we really have made some progress. So I just want to end on that high note.
Thank you very much, Marian. Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
So first, when I read the report in the packet, I was amazed at how much had been accomplished. And that brought to my mind the notion that better communication would really help. I mean, to, to read this stuff and think, wow, all these things have been accomplished and all these things are happening. It would be nice to have more reports, more progress statements, more meetings, maybe with the the master plan implementators to learn what's going on and what to anticipate and so on, so that I wouldn't be so amazed that, wow, this, what a, what a set of accomplishments have been done. It's, it's really very impressive. So my first point was to, to urge more meetings like this, more reports like this, more communication. It can even be by, by a memo or email that we're working on this, or we're working on that, or we've accomplished this. When you, when you see them all together, the way you presented it, it's, it's very impressive.
I'm wondering if it should be published somehow on the website or, you know?
Oh, absolutely.
Actually, I have a suggestion, though. I know lawyers like reports. I, I think Dover Sherborne Cable TV would be my recommendation. You know, they're looking for content all the time. So I think if we got some, whether it would be maybe a, just like you did here, and maybe a moderated panel with you and Tom and anyone else who would be involved. But I, I think a video live, you know, they can have replays of it at other times on Dover Sherborne Cable TV. But I'm teasing Paul. Reports are good, but I think getting it out there in a personal way and maybe even allowing town people to have a Zoom call and ask questions, I don't know. But I think interactive would be what I would say.
It kind of taps onto what you're saying, Jeff, because even, even earlier in this whole meeting, we asked, you know, questions were asked of the school committee candidates about communication departmental. I think one of the things, you know, I've been pushing for a while has been at least record and have archive all meetings of significant boards, especially since we're Zoom. Because then someone can just tune in if something happens. And maybe it's not as ideal, but you can always go back. You see this discussion about the, you know, from the different committees about the, about the reports and what's going on. And, you know, we've talked about it here, we've talked about it offline, that, you know, we still don't have a lot of things recorded and some past stuff and whatever. That's frustration of the past. But I think we really want to push of any significant committee that produces products like this, that meets via Zoom, should have all Zoom recordings, meetings archived and recorded, because then we can go back and look at.
So can I follow up on one thing there? The, a, a number of the towns that I work for have a regular rotation of bringing in committees to select board meetings and having a dialogue as to what are you working on, what are you doing, what, what are your plans? And from that conversation, you get more unity among the various boards and committees. It's been particularly hard during COVID, where people tend to end up being in little silos without having the, the community as a whole and the, the whole government understanding what each, each component of the government is doing. So the suggestion here is for Sherborne to do like other towns are doing and put these committees on a regular rotation. So perhaps like, like once or twice a year, we ought to meet with the school committee, find out what's going on, what their needs are, what, what they envision, short-term, long-term. Talk about things like mask mandates and how we have that in town buildings and how, or and they have it in schools, cord, make sure this coordination, all, all those kinds of things, but not, not just the school committee. This, this whole master plan piece, I'm just so thrilled at what's been done. But they could, they could be like every, every three months or, or four months to have a report on what's going on and implementing the master plan. And we have, we have a very knowledgeable member of the board who can even present it on a fairly regular basis. It, so that it becomes regular. And, and the same thing with other boards and committees, like the planning board or the, the Board of Appeals. When was the last time you met with the Board of Appeals? To find out what they're working on, what's their caseload, staffing needs, all that kind of stuff. Again, encouraging communication and a sense of one government.
Right, Paul. This is exactly why I wanted to put this together. And thanks to the Open Space Committee that helped put the details of the report together. But, you know, I've been kind of collecting these things ever since the master plan was published. And there are other sections that I have helped from other, other corners. For example, the housing section, Eddie May is helping me with that and other sections, other people. It kind of involves a whole lot of people. And, you know, I just, it's, it's nice to see it just once in a while, kind of all in one place. And there's no one, one board or one person that needs to be celebrated here. It's all, all the boards and committees that have, volunteers that have contributed to this. And I don't think they get enough recognition.
I guess I would partially agree, Marian, but I think we also need to thank you. You, you've really been a huge lead from when these plans were first produced. So lots of people deserve to be thanked, including yourself.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I picked the heart what Paul said too, about actually making an effort to actually invite in other board.
Yeah.
Basically, minimum, minimum once a year, rotating through. We actually decide what, you know, what boards are significant and to get updates from them.
There's kind of a funny thing, and George can relate to this too, is that advisory actually does that because they sit and review with every budget. So you sort of have to know what they're doing to understand, you know, what they're budgeting for the next year. So
That's a good point.
It's, it's a funny thing. They, they meet regularly all the way through early March with each board and budget maker.
Yeah, that's true. But even with that, you know, there's a lot in this report that goes under the, under the radar.
Yes, it does. That's, I think it's terrific.
Well, you'll get another installment sometime in January or February.
Excellent.
Yes, more and more.
Find cross-country skiing trails for us. We'll be good in January.
We've got that covered too, actually.
I did have one other comment on the, on the water part of it. So along, along my property, along the Charles River, I'm getting all these invasives. These unwanted species that are, that are moving inland from the river into my pastures and so on. These, the whole issue of what to do with invasives is something I'm hoping that somebody is going to look at systematically. Because if it's affecting me, it should be affecting other people.
I know it's affecting the barber. They, they looked at the barber, Paul. Didn't they do a detailed study there of it?
Invasives in water, though, is another issue that Tom Trainer has looked into extensively.
I, I see Kelly with his hands up.
I see Kelly as well. I just, I want to also, I, I do want to, you know, control this, this conversation a little bit to the actual master plan itself before we go on to, you know, every technical subject in it. So if we can keep it brief, that'd be great, Kelly.
Just to comment that tackling invasives in a more systematic way is exactly what the commission is looking forward to in the next calendar year. We've been sort of slapdash at it more recently, and frankly, it's not worked.
Hey, Tom, did you have something quick to add on that?
I can add some quickly specific to the Farm Pond Advisory Committee. And I'm the liaison from Open Space to that committee. They're doing a tremendous job, and they have been doing it for years. You know, making sure the boaters are washing their boats. And they, they keep a, a crew of volunteers every year doing the sweeps around the pond, looking for any, any signs of initial invasives. And it's incredible, Farm Pond, you, you cannot find a pond within thirty miles a year that is without invasives, except for Farm Pond. So we're, we're really fortunate. The, the Charles River, I'm painfully aware. You know, I, I do some volunteer work with the Charles River Watershed Association. And it's, it's, it's becoming a bigger and bigger problem throughout the Charles, from the Upper Charles area that we're in, all the way to Cambridge and Boston.
Okay. If no one has any further ado, issue that, I'm going to probably wrap up this agenda item. And thank you very much, all the volunteers that have worked on this. And just, I guess, one quick question, Marian. If you said it, I apologize. This will be like officially wrapped up as a document?
Well, you, you have the document as it now stands.
Okay.
Packet. So, you know, that's, that's a report that we could post, but, you know, it's a long thing that people won't read. So you can decide how, how it should be done. But we will, when we finish the rest of it, the rest of the whole master plan implementation progress report, we will put it together as a document. And you can help me, you can tell me what should be done with it. I'd like that to be decided by you guys.
Okay. Okay. I want people to think about that, and we'll discuss that as we look at it, unless anyone has any ideas right now. Okay. Okay. Think about it. And we'll actually talk about it again at some point. And I think that's a very good point. I, I actually would like it published, but either way, we'll talk more about that. If I can, I had a lot of meeting. Okay, thanks again. With no further ado, we'll go on to agenda item number seven, routine business. I know Paul had a request for a select board report. I'd like to go to Paul, and I actually requested that Paul make another select board report relative to the Veterans Day. So Paul, you had a quote about, what was it? I'm sorry, you sent emails about districts?
District.
Yes, I, I the, the General Court, the state legislature, has redistricted Sherborne. And that means that we've been moved out of David Linsky's rep district. They were now in Carolyn Dikemus district. We have a number of things that we're looking for from the legislature that, that David Linsky was helping us with, and I'm sure he would continue to help us. But because there was an emergency preamble to the legislation, the fact is he no longer represents us. He's gone. In order to continue the good work that David has done, I think we need to establish contacts with our new representative. And therefore, I was going to suggest that we invite her to come to a select board meeting to meet us, to meet town leaders and officials and the public through Zoom, so that everybody knows, you know, where to go for things that one used to go to David Linsky on. And there are some things that we could use her help with. And there's some projects that we'd like to get funded, like the Pine Hill Road earmark. This new earmarks that are in the process of being enacted even now, and they're in the conference committees between the House and the Senate. And one of them has an item for the, the water system at Leland Farms from the Senate side, but not, not on the House side. So it's, it has a risk of being eliminated because only one house has gone with it. So there are things that we would like her to do for us. So the proposal and the recommendation is that at our next select board meeting, or one pretty soon, we invite her in for, at her convenience, to introduce herself to us and to the community.
Can I add something to that?
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Yeah. We do have relations with that office, Liz Walker and We do have relations with that office. Liz Walker and I think it's David Melly is his name. And they are the legislative aides for Carolyn Dykema. So we, we have been in touch with that office before, going back to when we were working on the sustainability coordinator. So.
I remember that.
I was going to say, because she, she was at our meeting when we, she came to one of our meetings when we were talking about sustainability coordinator.
I remember that.
Yeah. So I, I can easily line that up.
So, I mean, I guess educate me for a second. This redistricting, is it effective January 1 or is it effective right now?
With a, there's a constitutional provision that says that nobody can run for a rep district unless they live in the district for more than one year. And therefore the rep districts had to be adopted and put into place by November 8 of 2021. So they are effective. As of then, not some future date. They had to be effective in order to give that one year for residents.
Well, I would like to actually advance an invitation for our next meeting. Would you want me to reach out to her? Paul, you want to reach out? Or David, how do we want to do that? Because I would like to have her come at our next meeting. We'll make it early in the agenda.
I've already emailed them, so I can let you know what I hear back.
Okay. Yeah, let me know. Absolutely.
We can also check, I believe, Paul, that David Linsky has, or had a meeting in town every Monday in the evening for citizens that want to come in. So we could see if she'll do this similar kind of outreach. Am I right about that? Doesn't David Linsky in the past, I'm not sure if it was every week, but he had office hours, quote unquote, office hours in town.
Yeah, there were definitely office hours. I, I just don't know the frequency.
Yeah. Okay.
But these are things to talk to her when she's with us.
Yep.
And that's a great idea, Jeff, to, to ask her right, right to her face while she's there.
Put her on the spot. All right. Thank you, Paul, for the update.
Um, another thing I guess I was going to add, I was going to maybe, oh, sorry, Paul, do you have something else, sir?
Well, yes. There was a Veterans Day event and thank goodness it was very well done. We had a nice group who organized it. I should probably ask Diane to describe it a little bit. She played a key role in putting it together. But at that event, there was a proclamation for Doug Brody. And I read it to the group and to Doug Brody, and he was quite touched by it and wanted to thank the board for the proclamation and for the sentiments that were in the proclamation. So I don't have it to, to read. So, but I think it's worth reading.
I, I think all of us signed it actually too.
Correct. Yeah.
We read it. It, it'd be good for the community on the call to hear it, but we all signed it.
I have a copy of it, Diane. I put it in my thing. I assumed everyone had a copy, so I, I texted Paul about it. He wanted to read it.
I don't have a copy. It wasn't in the packet.
Okay. Um, is it okay if I read it, Paul?
Yes, please.
So where is Douglas, Doug Brody, a longtime resident of the town of Sherburn since 1966, has served our community with his unwavering devotion to our town and his willingness to always lend a hand whenever needed, always appreciated, especially by staff and select board office. Can someone, I think someone has unmuted.
Read it. I'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you. Whereas Doug has served on various boards and committees, making significant contributions that will long be remembered, starting with his involvement in the fire department rescue back in 1982, and continuing on the zoning board of appeals, the elderly and disabled taxation committee, the council on aging, the medical reserve corp executive committee, and lastly, our veterans agent. Whereas during his tenure as a veterans agent for the town, he has touched the lives of many veterans who reside here. He's also been the lead member of our yearly Veterans Day celebration. Now, therefore, we, the select board of the town of Sherburn, on behalf of citizens, extend our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to Doug Brody for making the town of Sherburn a memorable place to work and live. A witness thereof, we have caused the seal of the town to be a fixist proclamation on the 11th of November in the year 2021. And I'll say, I'll give compliments to Diane. It was a very well-run celebration. It was a good balance of some outdoor and some indoor to kind of maintain, you know, reasonable occupancy levels in the rooms, social spacing, but also allow people to sit and eat and enjoy a good lunch with each other, enjoy each other's company. So thank you for Diane putting that on.
It was a good time. I think everybody enjoyed themselves.
Thanks, Diane. Really do appreciate it. I'm sorry we couldn't make it. I'd be a little bit self-serving and I want to thank our Boy Scouts. We had 16 Boy Scouts showed up.
Yes, we did.
To greet the veterans that day too. So that's, you know, they, those guys have a lot of more fun things to do than come stand in front of town hall. So it was a pretty good showing.
It was nice of them to come.
All right. Any other select board reports?
I was just going to ask if we can go back, an item, maybe not a proclamation, but we should do something to thank David Linsky, I think. I know he's, he's elected official and it's his day job, but should we have some kind of a letter or some kind of, he, he's supported the town for a long time, Paul. How long has he been supporting Sherburn? As long as I can remember, anyway.
Yeah.
There you go.
I think it's like 11 years.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I understand it's his day job too, but, you know, he really did. Every time I reached out to him, he was very responsive.
Absolutely. I don't, we can, um, we can think about it. I don't know if I want to bring it up in the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Any other select board reports? How about any town administrator reports?
No, thank you.
All right. Well, any further ado, as chair, I move that a executive session is warranted for the agenda items as previously read by the town administrator. And to close the open session of the meeting, well, the open session meeting again will be closed to go to executive session. We will only re-enter open session just simply to close the meeting as a whole. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well.
And I'll just add one more point, Eric. We have some people that are here for subsequent executive sessions. There's three, I think, in total. So we'll put some people in the waiting room.
Yeah, waiting room.
That won't be here for the first item. So we're not getting rid of you. We're just deferring you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Hi, Paul?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
All right. Have a good night, everybody.
Go pay attention, George. Bye.